...notice by the Board President pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118 and Vios Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, October 8th, 2013. The Board will take formal action on Tuesday, October 8th, 2013.
The Olbridge Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that the active recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Andriani?
Present.
Borsili?
Here.
Colabella? De Prima?
Here.
Donofrio?
Here.
Solakowski?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Quam Exist, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Mayor, do we have any addendums for this evening's meeting?
Yes, we do. Move the Board accept the addendum to Action Agenda for October 8th, 2013, under item number 23, XIII certificated, we're adding a number 12.
Have a motion, please, to add the addendum?
No, Donofrio make that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donofrio. Can I have a second, please?
Andriani will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Donofrio?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
The addendum passes.
Point of information, the addendum gets added on to the... It did not pass. We didn't vote on the addendum. We voted to put the addendum on the agenda.
That's right. And you will vote on it separately, or again, under certificated personnel.
I'm reacting to...
Excuse me?
I'm reacting to the statement that the addendum passed.
The inclusion of the addendum passed.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, there's one administrative correction tonight on page eight of the Action Agenda. Item number nine, which is part of non-certificated personnel other, section 22, that's XII. Item number nine on page eight, that's being administratively moved from the Action Agenda and moved to the Workshop Agenda, the same section. That's the wrong section. Okay, that'll be moved to page seven of the draft addenda, the draft agenda, and it will become item number eight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving forward, I see that we have our student representative with us this evening at the podium. Why don't you introduce yourself and give us your report, sir?
My name is Christopher Simone. I'm the student president at Olbridge High School. And this past Saturday, the Olbridge High School Marching Knights won the Yamaha Cup at MetLife Stadium. So that was pretty exciting. Also, in the past two weeks, we had our tailgate football game. Our new concession stand was open. We raised a lot of money there, and we pre-sold over 700 student tickets. So there was a huge turnout for that. There was over 3,000 people in attendance at the game, on the home side at least. The next two weeks are very busy for Olbridge High School. We have our Pink Out on October 18th. And tomorrow, October 9th, students will be wearing blue for bullying and brotherhood awareness. On October 18th, at the Pink Out game, students will be selling T-shirts, beads, pink shoelaces, lanyards, bracelets, everything to get the spirit up at Olbridge High School. So that's going to be a really great thing. Also, we're going to try and beat a Guinness Book World Record at this game. I actually brought with me an article that the Home News Tribune wrote on us. It came out a few hours before this meeting, and it states how Olbridge High School is trying to break the Guinness World Record for swishing away breast cancer. A former Olbridge graduate, Alyssa Monte, works for a PR firm now, and they work with a dental hygiene group. And they did a link. They linked oral hygiene and women's breast cancer prevention together, and they noticed that women who have very clean oral hygiene undergo chemotherapy much better and more effectively. So they did some research, and they noticed that the Guinness Book World Record for most people continuously swishing mouthwash is 1,200. Anyone in Olbridge knows that we have way over that in the student body. So at the October 18th Pink Out game, we will be attempting to break this world record, and all the proceeds are going to go to the Susan G. Coleman Foundation. And then anything we sell in school is going to go back to one of our own in our community who is affected by breast cancer. So that's going to be a really great thing. We're also going to have Rosie, the pink fire truck, who is the pink fire truck that's going to come and park at Lombardi Field. And anyone who makes a donation can sign the truck. There's going to be 40 volunteers from Middlesex County selling T-shirts and all the things to keep that up. Then the following week after that is going to be our homecoming week. We're going to have a spirit week in school. And we have 720 tickets ready for Olbridge High School students to come for the homecoming dance, October 24th, and the homecoming game, the 25th. So the next few weeks are going to be really busy, a lot of planning and a lot of fun for all Olbridge students. And that's it.
Sounds like there's a lot going on in our high school, and it's refreshing to see that you're part of this Board by being the student representative. And the insight that you share with us and the public is very helpful, and it shows, you know, the character building that we're doing in our schools, and it's just absolutely incredible. And I appreciate it, Chris. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sedidino, superintendent's report?
Tonight, there will be no superintendent's report as this is a slash Agenda building and workshop, an action meeting. But next week's meeting, we'll have a testing report from the supervisor of guidance, Jeffrey Caulfield.
Mr. Mayor, any correspondence?
No.
I have some correspondence, sorry.
Very good. Mr. Sedidino?
Mrs. Shari Cherry asked me to read this publicly, and it's a letter that she wrote to the staff at Olbridge High School. "I wanted to take a few moments to say thank you at the start of a great school year. My son Jacob is a junior at Olbridge High School, comes home each day enthused and inspired by what he is learning. His free time spent playing on the computer games has since decreased, while homework and preparing for the next day's classes and involvement in extracurricular activities at school has increased. Perhaps sociologists would say that this is a change in normal for teenagers as they mature. However, my point of writing for you today is to let you know that I sense the change is something much greater. It's Olbridge High School itself. It's the passion and the effectiveness of the teachers and administration who are creating exciting curriculum opportunities and learning environments. Environments where my son, who is taking a demanding course load, would rather stay in school and work hard than risk a lower grade point average because his teachers are inspiring him to challenge himself rather than take the easy way out. The tone of doing so is relaxed and not stressful, and leaving an opening for students to explore their natural curiosity of the subject matter to take over. I believe this energy is contagious. I say this because it is trickled down to my son Andrew, who is a seventh grader at Carl Sandberg Middle School, who comes home equally excited to share what he's learned on that day. My email would not be complete without mentioning the excellent work of the Guidance Office, College Career Center, and those coordinating the college admissions session, like the one that was just sent to my son from a representative from USC. Sessions like that instill and reinforce Jake's drive to desire and to excel in school and on the SAT tests, so that all doors will open for him as he's applying for colleges." When we received this email from Ms. Cherry, I asked her if we could share that publicly, and she says, "Absolutely. Share it with anyone you like. I believe something very special is opening and sweeping through the schools in Olbridge, and I thought I should say thank you." So again, I would like to take the opportunity for anyone who would like to share information about our schools, to send me information. I will share it publicly, and where praise is due is we will provide it. Someone asked me recently if, you know, if we're going to take time at every meeting to acknowledge the staff and for their accomplishments, and I say yes, because I feel that every employer should acknowledge the hard work of their employees as they are determined to bring the best to our students. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sedidino. Do we have any special committee reports this evening from my fellow board members?
Well, yeah, I can start. The curriculum meeting and technology meeting from last night was canceled. We postponed it. It looks like we have a tentative date for November 18. So if anybody wants to jot that down on their calendar, I assume both meetings will be the same night. We also had a personnel meeting scheduled for last night that we had to cancel. I'm not quite sure what I can share publicly with personnel. I can tell everybody that due to comments and due to budget restraints, the Board of Education has pretty much taken a hard line on not adding additional staff, replacement only. And that's been the stance that we've taken. The exception to that, of course, is anything, any teachers, any children who are special needs, where we might need an additional paraprofessional, or someone's IEP is changed, and where there is a staffing issue and an enrollment issue. With that said, we have a request for another position at SOC, which we need to talk about, and I don't know how much I can share. The security guard issue, there were two of them that were discussed, and we had a little miscommunication, and so we didn't, we don't have that defined as of yet, but it apparently, we do not have... Hmm, let me backtrack. Because it's a security guard issue, and that's a security, I may not be able to talk about that either.
You can still talk about the addition of a position, to the extent that it was an agenda item.
Yes, we have two. There were two positions. So one of them, one of them as a substitute position was agreeable with most of the Board members, so that was one. The other was an additional security guard, and the Board has not had a chance to discuss that. So that's why it was removed from this evening's agenda until we get a chance to do so. So I just wanted everybody to know where that came from on the agenda. That'll go on next week's, after our discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Anyone else on the Board would like to share any special committee reports?
Yeah, Mr. President, real quick. At the last meeting, I mentioned about having some kind of ceremony at the concession stand. I've been really busy since the last meeting, have not worked too much on it, but I'm going to have a discussion with Mrs. Lucchetti tomorrow, see if we can pull this off in two weeks. That's it.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. De Prima. Anyone else?
Yes, Thursday, we're going to have a real policy meeting, and I guess strategic planning. We're going to piggyback that one. We're going to start at 7:00 in the Administration Building. We're going to discuss the reorganization meeting, which takes place in January, and using school property for signs and plaques. We're going to create a policy on that. Pardon me?
This Thursday?
This Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Solakowski. Mr. Donofrio?
I'm looking to arrange a performing arts athletic meeting for the month of November, so if Mr. Mayor can kindly send me an email on available dates for November, so I can share it with my co-person, my co-people and set up a date for that meeting, preferably early November, Mr. Mayor, if possible.
Thank you, Mr. Donofrio. Moving forward, we're going to open the floor to hearing of the residents. On agenda items only. Going once, going twice. I'm closing this portion of the meeting. Curriculum. Can I have a motion to move curriculum? Items one, two, and three.
Andriani will move that.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Can I have a second, please?
Mr. Donofrio will second, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donofrio. Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Andriani?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
Colabella? I'm sorry. De Prima?
Yes.
Donofrio?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Finance. Items one through nine may have a motion.
Borsili will motion.
Thank you, Mr. Borsili. May I have a second, please?
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Donofrio?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Non-certificated personnel office may have a motion, please.
Borsili may make a motion. Move it.
Thank you, Mr. Borsili. May I have a second?
Andriani will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Any discussion on this matter? Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
De Prima?
Yes.
Donofrio?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Finance. Items one through nine may have a motion.
Borsili will motion.
Thank you, Mr. Borsili. May I have a second, please?
Donofrio will second, Finance, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donofrio. Any discussion or concerns? Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Donofrio?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Non-certificated personnel other, one through eight, since nine has been tabled. May I have a motion, please?
Donofrio make that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donofrio. Can I have a second?
De Prima will second.
Thank you, Mr. De Prima. Any discussion or concerns?
I'd just like to say one thing on number eight.
Through my experience, in my past experience being a part of the Olbridge High School PTSA, I've worked, I've gotten to know Mr. Daley pretty well, and I can't think of a better choice. I'm very glad that instead of moving out, our people are just moving within, so we don't lose any of our key players. And I guess I'm preempting the vote, but assuming the vote goes in favor, congratulations.
Mr. President, if I may comment as well. Selfish part of me, the selfish part of me be voting no on item eight, but the realistic part of me be voting yes, because losing Mr. Daley up at the high school is going to be a tremendous blow. But then again, someone like Mr. Daley is probably one of the few people who can fill the shoes of Dr. Catherine Holker down there. So again, I'll be voting yes, but my heart, too, wishes he would stay at the high school.
Any further discussion on one through 12? Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Donofrio?
Yes. Congratulations, hopefully.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Abstains.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Supplies, equipment, and services. May I have a motion, please? Motion, please, on supplies, equipment, and services.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donofrio. Can I have a second?
Andriani will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Discussion or concern on this item? Mr. Mayor, roll call.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Abstains.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Supplies, equipment, and services. May I have a motion, please?
Donofrio will make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion, please, on supplies, equipment, and services.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donofrio. Can I have a second?
Andriani will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Discussion or concern on this item? Mr. Mayor, roll call.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Donofrio?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Supplies, equipment, and services. May I have a motion, please?
Donofrio?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Transportation. May I have a motion on items one through three?
Andriani will move.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. May I have a second, please?
Donofrio will make that motion, Mr. President.
Mr. Weber, thank you. Discussion or concerns on this item?
Borsili will second.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Solakowski?
Yes. Congratulations, hopefully.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Abstains.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Donofrio?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Supplies, equipment, and services. May I have a motion, please?
Donofrio?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Donofrio?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Supplies, equipment, and services. May I have a motion on items one through three?
Andriani will move.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. May I have a second, please?
Donofrio?
Mr. Weber, thank you. Discussion or concerns on this item? Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Solakowski?
Yes. Congratulations, hopefully.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Abstains.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Supplies, equipment, and services. May I have a motion, please? Motion, please, on supplies, equipment, and services.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donofrio. Can I have a second?
Andriani will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Discussion or concern on this item? Mr. Mayor, roll call.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Abstains.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Donofrio?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Supplies, equipment, and services. May I have a motion, please? Motion, please, on supplies, equipment, and services.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donofrio. Can I have a second?
Andriani will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Discussion or concern on this item? Mr. Mayor, roll call.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Donofrio?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Supplies, equipment, and services. May I have a motion on items one through three?
Andriani will move.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. May I have a second, please?
Donofrio?
Mr. Weber, thank you. Discussion or concerns on this item? Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Donofrio?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Supplies, equipment, and services. May I have a motion on items one through three?
Andriani will move.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. May I have a second, please?
Donofrio?
Mr. Weber, thank you. Discussion or concerns on this item? Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Donofrio?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Miscellaneous, items one through four. May I have a motion, please?
Donofrio will make that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Can I have a second?
Borsili will second.
Thank you, Mr. Borsili. Any discussion or concern on this item?
How many hours are involved?
Mr. Sedidino?
I'm not positive how many hours involve. It's a part-time position on weekly. It's usually about three hours a day, if I can estimate correctly.
Yeah, at some point in time, we had asked going forward that anything that has money
Miscellaneous, items one through four, may I have a motion, please?
Donofrio, make that motion, Mr. President, items want to fall in the miscellaneous.
Thank you, Mr. Can I have a second?
Porcelli will second.
Thank you, Mr. Porcelli, any discussion of concern on this item?
How many hours are involved?
I'm not positive how many hours involve, it's a part-time position on weekly, it's usually about three hours a day, if I can estimate correctly.
Yeah, at some point in time, we had asked going forward that anything that has money associated with it, that we get a quantifiable number for the, not just the hourly rate, but how many total dollars are anticipated to be spent during the year, and the other secondary question I have is, given tight budget times going forward, where will the funding for this come from?
This budgeted item.
Yeah, this is included in the budget, there's a line item specifically for this purpose.
Okay.
Going forward, just, please, let's just make sure that we put that information, what, to not exceed amount, if we have that, at least there's parameters and specifics for the board, so that they can fully understand what's required, even though it's only seven miles and fifty cents per hour, we should have a not-to-exceed amount on that, thank
Any other discussion of concerns? Mr. Mayor, roll call, please.
Weber.
Yes.
Adriani.
Yes.
Porcelli.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Donofrio.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Board Secretary and Board Business, items one, have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donofrio, may I have a second?
Adriani.
Thank you, Mrs. Adriani, any discussion of concern?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski.
I'd like to separate number one, and I would like to discuss it.
So, do you have any discussion or concern, Mr. Solakowski?
Yes, I'd like to know who made the decision that we're going to move the agenda back to the main library, I think the board should vote on this, whether they want to go to the library, or we, or do we go back to the administration building, I think it's more comfortable in there.
Mr. Solakowski, at the conclusion of our last board meeting over at the high school, we had a discussion with the entire board, unfortunately, two members had to leave for various reasons, I'm not sure why, but it was brought to our attention that some board members and administration didn't like the format, so we had the conversation, we took a straw poll, and we agreed that going back to the original format with some modifications would be in the best interest for everyone, and that's what we did. Now, to move it back to the administration building, that was a question as well, and the board and me as president spoke to Mr. Sedino about it, and we want to give a little bigger atmosphere. We are open to moving it back to the administration building, but just so that we can accommodate everyone who would want to be there, we felt that the library would be the perfect venue. Now, the modification that we're going to make, we're going to have it videotaped based upon the request of many board members, because we want transparency, and that's very important. And I think by having these two meetings that we have now, Mr. Solakowski, it's very transparent, and the public can see what's going on, and we want to keep with that spirit. But it takes a lot of resources and time to develop two full business meetings a month, so we want, decided to go back to the original format with some modifications. So, it's open to the board to discuss if we want to have it in the administration or back in the library, that can be changed, that venue, based upon board opinion.
Yeah, I would like that, it's very easy to set up a video camera in the administration building for a thousand dollars and have it remote, so this way all the meetings could basically be videotaped. I would prefer going back to the administration building, it's more comfortable, the seats are more comfortable, and there's a coffee machine there, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solakowski, that would be discussed among the board, thank you, sir.
Mr. President, for the benefit of the people watching on TV, can we just summarize what that says, because maybe people aren't aware of the change in venue?
Yes, I believe I just explained, but I'll do it again.
I think Mr. Prima means the dates and stuff, so people are more, the whole format.
Going back to the old format.
Yes. Mr. Sedino, you want to explain the old format?
Not too many moons ago, the agenda building session would be held publicly at the, in the administration building in the conference room. Depending on the topic that was being discussed, or items being built on the agenda, sometimes it would get a little crowd in there. And at one point, when I was the high school principal, we moved it to the Old Bridge High School to allow for more space and to allow more public participation, as the meetings were becoming, I guess, you know, more attendance was coming on at these meetings. I spoke to a few members of a parents' group, and, you know, the board can decide which direction they want to go, but the recommendation came from the parents' group was that the Old Bridge Library is, does not put them under a microscope when they come in, they feel as though, when they come to the conference room, there's basically one door, you can walk in when the meeting starts, and everybody knows when you walked in, and when you've walked in late, and who's in there and who's not in there. The parents liked the opportunity to attend the board meeting in the library, and blend in with the crowd as they come in, and not be under a microscope as to who's there and who's not there. And they felt it was more of an atmosphere that is conducive to education, and something that I've said before, you know, when you're in a school library, you're always constantly reminded of what your goal and your mission is, which is children. When you're in a conference room, you can be making sprockets, for all you know, without those reminders around you that you're supposed to be working for the goal of children.
So, would the concern about what time people come in preclude us from televising or recording anything going forward, since we would memorialize it?
Having the meeting in the library?
Whatever. I mean, if you're going to memorialize it on TV.
I was, I've spoken to Steve Kudjuski and the TV studio, they can do that, they can do it less elaborately than they would do here, with one camera setup, a more, I guess, rudimentary microphone setup, that would allow, something else we're looking to do, and savings we could do, instead of going to show there, is allow us to moving to the streaming realm, something we've discussed, that we would have the meetings streamed on a hosting website, so that, you know, here, only members of Old Bridge can see the actual, the proceedings, but we have members of our staff, who maybe cannot make it to meetings at night, that live in other towns and they can't see them. If the meetings were held on a streaming site, then anyone who wanted to have interest in what goes on at a board meeting could watch them at their own time at home, and that would make it more accessible and more transparent.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes, Mr. Weber.
My concern is not so much the particular venue for where the agenda, or even going back to the old format of an agenda meeting and then an action meeting thereafter. One of my biggest concerns in making the original recommendation was the fact that there was only a single week between the agenda session and the workshop session. One of the things that was pointed out at the time that was, that this was made, it would facilitate a more orderly payment of vendor bills by having it two weeks apart twice a month, I think that would be an advantage for the business office, would not put them under the gun for some certain parts of what they do. But my bigger concern is, I've been around this Board of Education process since 1986, and a board member often on since 1993, and I have to say in the last few years, four or five years, I've seen just, in my opinion, too many times where something, a presentation shows up in an agenda meeting, and the board is pressured to move and take action on it at the next meeting, without having had the proper opportunity to vet the whole process, ask the questions, get the answers that are required, because in a typical, in a typical week, the board packet goes out on a Friday afternoon, or gets emailed to us now, the meeting is over Tuesday night, and by the time the board members see it, you get a very little opportunity to do your homework properly, get all the answers back that you require of administration. I will not support this the way it's listed, but if it is, I have no problem with it being the old process, but I think that the schedule of two weeks between the agenda meeting and the workshop one is one that should be maintained.
Mr. Weber, your comments have a lot of validity to them, and I agree, I think that's something that we can consider, I think having two weeks between an agenda session and also the regular business meeting would be advantageous for those points that you just brought up. However, we have already notified the public of the change up into January, so to keep with the spirit of what we're doing, we will continue with the second and third week, and come January, we will consider going every two weeks, so that, you know, your concerns, and I think the valid concerns, that we could possibly separate by two weeks.
So, I'm missing a step here, so we, we have a meeting after a meeting that we didn't have for a discussion to make these changes, we notify the public the changes are going to take place, and now we're going to vote on it. What's wrong with this picture?
The decision to make that was the board president, I made that decision based upon...
But it was done at a workshop, Mr. Dunn, it was at a workshop, and two members left early.
The discussion happened, two members left.
In a public, in a public meeting?
At the September, the second September meeting, yes.
Correct, we had the conversation at the conclusion of the meeting, like I said previously, and the board, you know, was in consensus.
But again, we've published this schedule without approving it, and now we're saying we're committed to going with the, because we told the public we're going to do it, now we have to vote yes, and then we can maybe change it in three months, as opposed to approving it first and then letting the public know when the meetings are.
Mr. Weber, this, this schedule was not published yet, the remaining, that was, the schedule that was published earlier in the year is still in effect, once this resolution is voted on, it will be published, but it's not published yet, it's just being voted on tonight.
So, that then should not be a consideration? If the board chooses to amend this, because the existing schedule has a two-week separation, correct? The one that was modified back in April, or whenever we did it, had a two-week separation between meetings.
That's correct.
I believe that's, that's correct, that's what I emailed today. So, and if we have not published any, any schedule, it certainly should not be an issue now to amend this, if the board is, feels that they want to do that.
The board is, as I said, the, the schedule that was published in April is still the, the meeting schedule that's in effect, tonight, we, the board is voting on amending that schedule, and if the board approves it, it will be published tomorrow or Friday for the rest of the year.
No, I understand that part of the process, what I'm saying is, Mr. Dunn alluded earlier on that this had already been published, so that was a concern to stay consistent with that message for the, for this agenda item as it's written, but apparently that's not the case, since it has not been published, so I would move to amend this to change the format to an agenda meeting, followed by a workshop, a separate workshop meeting, but to keep them two weeks apart, and follow the schedule that's already published.
Can you just correct the record, I did misspeak, Mr. Weber, and it was published...
Well, then maybe I misunderstood you.
On, on the agenda, but it wasn't published to the public where we made the notification, so yes, it's on the agenda, but it hasn't been given to the public as notification. Will, anyone entertain Mr. Weber's?
If I may, I am all for going back to the old format, because I still find the new format confusing, but I do agree with Mr. Weber about the two weeks, I think that gives us ample time to think about what's going on, read what's about what's going on. I want the old format, but I do like the two-week interval.
And, Mr. Dunn, I believe that I did bring that up at that agenda session as well, that I agree that we should go back to the old format, because I thought that the agenda session was better for debate purposes, however, I did bring up the point that I, my opinion was that we should remain at every two weeks, and so we should have, my suggestion at that meeting was to go with the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, so typically you would have a meeting every other week, with the exception of when you have, you know, a month where you have five Tuesdays, but, you know, just for the, for a couple of reasons, number one, it does give some more time in between if there's questions that arise, and number two, I brought up the, the case where, my understanding, the reason why, one of the reasons why we went to this new format, not just to have an action and a workshop at both meetings, but that every two weeks, for bill list items, we'd be able to, to vote on them, and they'd be able to make payments, and I was told at that meeting that that didn't seem to be that much of an issue.
Mr. Dunn, I'd like to, we do have a new superintendent, we do have a new assistant superintendent, I'd like to hear their opinion on when the meeting should be, they're the ones that prepare all the stuff, and they're the ones that run the everyday business of the school district, so I'd like to hear their opinion on...
No, I agree, but first I want to hear all the consensus of the board, where they stand, obviously there's two or three individuals at this point, who feel that every two weeks would be beneficial, obviously what the administration's going to say would be very helpful.
The more time we have in between meetings to digest stuff, is always, always going to benefit us as board members, but is that necessarily going to, what's going to benefit the district? I think if I make my opinion or give my vote, I need to hear what Mrs. Sedino, Ms. Holker, and of course Donna, obviously she's been here for years, how they feel about having a meeting every two weeks so spread far apart, or maybe it's best for them as well.
Fair enough, I think that's what we're going to do, we're going to get their recommendation, but board members are going to speak their mind as well, and give their opinion, and then we're going to come to a consensus between the Board of Education and the administration on how to approach this. Does any other board members have anything else to say about?
I was under the impression that we were going to continue to pay bills at both meetings, is that, that's not the case anymore? I mean, and Mr. Weber makes, Mr. Weber makes a very valid point about having enough time for discourse and to be able to digest the material, Mr. Porcelli is, has a valid argument about, about the bill list, we certainly don't want to hold up any vendors or do anything where it's only, bills are only being paid once a month.
The bills under both scenarios, prior when we had the, the meeting back-to-back, their bill lists approved at each meeting, so that...
But that would continue?
That would continue, yeah.
If that's what we were doing.
That would continue, yes.
The difference would be, and Mr. Mayor will certainly step in and correct me if you don't agree, is that by having it on a two-week cycle, for example, now, when you, let's say you do it in week one and week two, well, now you have to wait to pay a bill that hasn't been paid in week two till you get back to week one, which is three weeks, or three and a half weeks plus, depending, I mean, three weeks plus anyway, until you get back to the next one. By having it every two weeks, there's more symmetry to the process, and there should be less waiting time for those people that are normally caught in that three-week extra payment period.
Week one, week one and week two is very ineffective, and I certainly would not recommend that to the board, however, week two and week three are effective.
No, you can just pick one or two arbitrarily, it's, it's an illustration.
Okay.
Mr. Dunn, also, too, what I do want to do, it says, being a board member for several years myself, December itself is usually, is a crazy meeting, is a crazy month, that's usually, right now, the high schools, the middle schools all have their holiday plays set up and scheduled, they have the holiday shows all scheduled, you know, they're not going to move their dates, you know, for us, because we decided to move the board meetings. I mean, you do have a new board coming in in January, there's three meetings left, I mean, you have three, you have November, December, you know, and then you have a new board coming in, I mean, is it wise to start moving this now, I mean, this was published, this was, you know, we received this on Friday, I know I adjusted my calendar already for this, I'm sure the administration has, I'm sure it's not just something this Dave threw on the agenda, these dates, I'm sure the old supervisors, all the, you know, the principals all now have these dates as well, and I know they read the agenda, as, you know, as well as the board members do, so I don't know, I mean, is it wise to, when a new board might come in and say, no, we want this, this way now, I mean, I mean, only two meetings left, you only got two months left, is it smart to restart doing everything right now, especially December being all the holiday shows, there's hardly any business going on in the month of December except bill paying, not choosing a time for the students, and I know a lot of the board members enjoy those meetings, and not to be able to attend the musicals because you have a meeting that night, or a play, you know, it's really not fair to any board member, because that is the most enjoyment part of being a board member.
Can I add one more thing, instead of going on and on about this, Mr. Weber, I totally agree with what you're saying about the two hours, but in, in essence of keeping to the agenda, you agreed if we revisit it in January, and just leave this like it is tonight?
No, I don't, no, I'll tell you why, Sally, we already have an existing schedule that takes into consideration all of the holiday structure, do we not? That's the current one, that, the one that was published, that changed us to this format, has a schedule that goes throughout the rest of the year, is that correct or not, Mr. Mayor?
It has October twenty, that is correct, however, there is a meeting scheduled for October 22nd, and there is a conflict with that date, which was unknown at the time, which was unknown at the time of the publication of the...
New Jersey School Board.
Of the, of the schedule, and the first board meeting was to be determined because we, because of the election.
All right, now, but, but the other part of it, the November and the December dates have already been scheduled and published, and take into consideration all the concerns that Mr. Donofrio had. The other one that came, comes up in October, and I understand that, there was an unplanned for contingency, and that's fine, leave it alone, I'm just, the other part, in other words, I don't want this to be about, we have to stay where we are because of that, we already have a schedule that accommodates the holidays, does all of that, with the modification, just changing the October meeting, the bigger concern that I have is the format that's laid out, having two weeks in between, you may not be able to do it every month, and I understand that, particularly in December, or maybe when there's Easter holiday that month, but at least try to establish a policy and follow it for having two weeks in between.
One thing I want to make sure is that whatever this board decides stays consistent, and we need to be able to give the administration the direction and stay with it, and I don't want to change things up continuously, because it makes their lives a lot more difficult. So, I want to make sure if we do go back to the, the previous model that we've had with the two meetings a month, one as an agenda, one as a business meeting, I want to make sure that we can take action in the event it's necessary during the agenda session, like we've previously done, previously have done, so we need to understand that, if we're going to separate it by two weeks, there may be a point during the agenda session, we may have to have an action agenda, I know that this board had some issues about that, why are we taking action during an agenda session, but sometimes when it's spread out two weeks apart, we may have to do that, so as long as the board is okay with that, and we stay consistent, then I don't think the administration will have a problem going with the two weeks in between, but we as a board need to reinforce the fact that we need to stay consistent, and that action agenda, action items may be on the agenda session, do we all agree with that? Fair enough. Can we amend what's here and have it as two weeks?
I couldn't tell you that we can sit here and amend it right now as to what these dates would be, without looking at a district calendar.
Okay.
To set these dates, I sent an email out to the entire board on September 26th, to set these dates, I only received conflicts from two board members, so we're hearing now that we want to change the dates, I'd have to go back to the calendar, look at the board calendar, look at the school calendars, and, to change them, so to be able to take action here right now would be irresponsible, because I couldn't tell you what's going on in all the schools right now if we're going to change the dates.
Okay, so we'll do...
Mr. Dunn, I think we should just leave it, I mean, revisit it in January, I mean, you're gonna...
If, if I have the consensus right now, then I will put this to a vote, but I want to make sure that this does not, not fail, I don't want this to be an issue.
I think Mr. Weber has a valid point, I think we do need two weeks in between, I think Mr. Solakowski does have a policy meeting on Thursday, I think he should put it in, you know, another discussion he can have, as far as setting of board policy, but I think now, like I said, this has already been established, only two months left, there's only two meetings left, I mean, you know...
Do we have anybody who has an iPad that can pull up our school calendar? I don't get, I don't know, get the internet, yeah. But give me a moment, I can do that.
Okay, what we're going to do at this point, I'm going to take Mr. Donofrio's opinion, and I'm going to put this to a vote, and, and see how we're going to move forward with this. At this point, there's some valid concerns here, it's, it's been published, they did send it to us as board members, we did receive it, and we all responded, and, and, Mr. Sedino, did any of the board members respond negatively that this wasn't going to work for them?
The only interest that I haven't received was that on Wednesday, the October 16th, is the Senate election, a special election, that poll closes at eight o'clock, ours wouldn't start till 7:30, so we didn't see a major conflict there, and there was a request, just a possible conflict with Old Bridge High School's schedule, but that turned out not to be a conflict either, so...
So, based upon what you have here, there's no conflicts with any board members, as far as you know, and it's not conflicting with our schedule? Yes, you did send an email today about having an issue, but at this point, everyone's calendar cannot match, it's almost impossible, so, at this point, is there going to be any more discussion on this matter before it goes to a vote?
I, well, are we voting to, are we voting for what's here now, the way it is?
That's correct.
So, as...
Is the motion to make an amendment, have we, do I have a second?
Well, I would be willing to do that, but, you know, the superintendent says that he doesn't, we don't really know what and if there are any conflicts now within, with this amended schedule, so how do we, how do we vote on something that may, may provide more conflict?
To provide some assistance to the board, why don't we vote for just the October dates?
October.
October dates, then, and then in the discussion time period, the, at the October 8th workshop, that's to worry about, I'm sorry, there's October dates, October 16th, maybe the 19th, and at the October, November 19th workshop, we iron out the rest of the, the date.
I think you should actually leave the December alone also.
You guys, December's a crazy month, including the PTA meetings, I know a lot of board members are going to want to go to the PTA meetings, you know, it's...
I have one question regarding the October meetings, so, are we saying that we don't know if the 22nd was available? Why did we opt to go with the 16th, is it just because we wanted it to be the following week?
No, the school boards.
Oh, that's, that's what it was, okay.
It was the, the convention.
The convention, okay, so you guys can't be here for the 22nd, I understand, okay.
Okay, what we're going to do is, is October okay with the entire board, we can solidify October's calendar, keep it the way it's delineated on the agenda, and then we have to discuss November, December, and January.
The November date was never set, and there was no calendar ever, there was never a date set for November, so the November 19th would not disrupt anyone's previous plans for...
That was already on the original calendar.
So, if we, if we accepted the 19th and October 16th, November 19th and October 16th, we would not be disrupting anything beyond that, and at the 19th, like I said, at that workshop agenda, we can all bring our calendars, we can bring the school calendars, and sit together and put this together, so that it works for everyone.
Does that work for the board?
I have, I may have the...
Well, we're only going to approve right now is the October, and then we're going to sit down as a board and determine what we do next, and one thing I'm going to ask the Board of Education is, when you get mail, please read it, please make sure you understand what's going on, because we could have averted this issue if we had timely responses, and it was sent home, we all digested it, I don't know, you know, if we read it or not, but please, in the future, make sure we digest the information and get back to us timely, because it does affect the meeting, we just spent 25 minutes on going back and forth with something that we could have dealt with easily on Thursday of last week.
There's a potential of having a three-week span where there'll be no meeting, because you got to realize, we're not, we're meeting October 16th, right, then we're all off to the Jersey Convention, now, just to say, on October 16th, we all bring our calendars, and none of us can make it the first or second week of November, now you're going to push the 19th to a further week, now, three weeks before you have a board meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Dunn, you're, you're looking at October 16th and November 19th, that's over a month in between meetings.
I mean, you really should keep this as is, until a new board comes in.
I mean, you know, here, we're, we're at a point where we're putting meetings back-to-back weeks, but then we're going over a month without a meeting, my suggestion, and I do recall making the suggestion in the last meeting as well, was going with the 12th and the 26th of November, I don't know, I'm looking at my calendar, and I don't see any district activities on the 12th, so that would be my only recommendation, is that we look to move the, the November meeting up to the 12th.
You already, correct if I'm mistaken, you already researched these dates? Mr. Sedino? District-wide, not just high school-wide. You don't understand why we're making, we look like fools again.
The problem with November 12th is that the Thursday and Friday prior to that is the teachers' convention, so school is closed, there's no one in the district, so that means we would have to prepare the, the agenda on Wednesday that week, of, almost a week in advance of the meeting. It's an ineffective way to do it, for that particular week. That, that's why it was not selected. That week is, we're off Election Day, and we're closed Thursday and Friday. That's why the 19th was selected, and the 19th was on the original publication of the meetings, prior in the year, and the 12th or the 5th was never there.
All right, I, I think, you know, based upon what we have in front of us, I think we move forward with the way it's delineated here, because we're going to get into a lot of different pitfalls, and we're never going to come to a consensus. I'm going to make the recommendation, and I will put it to a vote. If someone wants to make a motion, they can make a motion to move forward with this.
I'll make a motion to move forward.
You, you already have a motion on the table to accept it as listed on the agenda. Mr. Weber has a motion to amend, and that is now pending a second.
Leaving October the way it's currently listed, and following the modification for the calendar, which has previously been published through the rest of the year, which was when we changed this format, that goes out through the end of the year, which should take care of November and December without any issues.
I'll second that, Mr. Weber.
There was only one meeting that was scheduled for the month of November in the original publication, which was November 19th, and the first meeting of November was listed as to be determined, because, so there is, there's only one, there's only one meeting planned for the month of November, so a second meeting would have to be scheduled.
All right, as, as we have two scheduled here as well now, I mean, under this current, this proposal. Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, does anybody have access to our current calendar electronically? I, I don't have a, because that would answer a lot of questions about December certainly, because if November's an issue, you can fix it.
There, there's a motion on the floor to amend, and I have a second.
No, you have a second.
Right, I do have a second.
So you're looking for any further discussion on the motion as amended by Mr. Weber?
Correct, any further discussion?
I'm sorry, what exactly are we voting on now?
Just October, I believe, right?
Mr. Weber, do you want to restate your amended motion?
The amendment would be to keep the October date here, the second meeting date for October 16th, because of the now resolved conflict with the New Jersey School Board Convention, and follow the current published schedule that's already there. Now, from what Mr. Marra says, that leaves November with only a single date, and I get that, but that's something that certainly can be resolved between now and then. Trying to follow the two-week format as closest to the two-week format as possible.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second roll call on Frank Weber's change?
I'm sorry, I didn't get who's second, Mr. Weber's motion. Andriani?
I'm lost. I apologize, so, I mean, I'm still looking for a calendar.
I'll pass for now.
Borceli?
Yes.
De Prima?
No.
DiNofrio?
No.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Dunn?
No.
Mrs. Andriani, you passed, you didn't abstain.
Somebody's going to have to clarify for this, for me one more time, please.
I'll give it my best shot, Donna. Again, recognizing the format will be a single agenda session and a single workshop, that, no change. October is the dates of published, no change. November currently has, on the existing calendar, from what Mr. Marra is saying, is one date with a second date to be resolved. And December has two dates, Mr. Marra, I believe, under the existing calendar, which recognizes the holidays and all the other issues. So the only thing it would do is October remains the same, November, a second date needs to be set, and December already has dates set, and it would try and honor for the next two months, November and December, a two-week separation.
And I could hear the channels changing on the TV, people turning this off.
Hold on, we're, we're only waiting for Mrs. Andriani's vote on the amended motion. You look like you're still maybe having some struggles.
Donna, what I'm, what I'm, the point Mr. Weber's bringing out, he wants two weeks in between every meeting, that was the amendment, okay? Right, but then, then, then the tide changed, because as we, as we further and further, while you're looking, while you were reading, while having discussions, realizing more, there's more and more conflicts happening, you know, so it's just, it's just not going to, it's, you know, and I've said, just let it go until January, and let the new board decide how they want to run, and gives, gives administration an opportunity to set the dates. Right now, Mrs. Sedino and his staff did their due diligence with these dates, he already sent it out district-wide, and they came back with these dates, that worked. So, that's the amendment that Frank wants to do.
We're not, we're not really going to have discussion on Mrs. Andriani's vote, that, while recognizing her importance, that maybe violates your parliamentary procedures, so, Donna, if you have questions, if you need to abstain, you abstain, if you have questions, you can ask them, but I don't think it's appropriate for any, either side to be presenting arguments to Mrs. Andriani. So Donna, you kind of have the ball here.
I, I think I'm in the negative, I would prefer at this point to leave it the way it is. So how do I vote on this?
Is that a no?
So we're voting no, then I'm voting no.
Then it's no. Mr. Marra?
So the amendment does not pass.
Okay, so we're going to, the motion's already here for number one, for Secretary of Board Business, so do I need another motion now, bring this back to the floor?
No, you already have a motion by Mr. DiNofrio, seconded by Mrs. Andriani.
Fair enough.
You're back to any more discussion on that.
Any discussion?
So, this discussion is on voting for leaving it the way that it is?
That's correct.
Okay, well, I, I just still don't think that we should have over a month in between meetings, so, that's my opinion on that, between October 16th and November 19th.
Thank you, Mr. Borceli, any other discussion? Mr. Barr, roll call, please.
Andriani?
Oh, do I have to go first?
You, you can pass, and I'll come back to you.
I voted no for the other one, then I'll vote yes for this one.
Borceli?
No.
De Prima?
Yes.
DiNofrio?
Yes.
Solakowski?
No.
Weber?
No.
Dunn?
Yes, and come January, the board will consider moving to every two weeks as our calendar, but right now, we're going to stay consistent with what's published, thank you.
Motion passes.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have a little change in our agenda, we're going to open it up now to the public for, for comment. On anything? Good, well, yours, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, voters and taxpayers of the Old Bridge, you see, this special election, what, you know, it costs about $12 million. That $12 million should have given that money to the Board of Education of the townships, like our Board of Education of Old Bridge, and just like similar, so that our taxes should have been cut down, instead of wasting special election. Does it make sense, if not a Democrat or Republican, all should think on the taxpayer point of view. And our school taxes are the two-thirds of your property taxes, that comes about 66% of your taxes. Why, why our governor, Chris Christie, he's not afraid even before his general election that is coming on the month of November? And I really don't understand, I tried to understand, but I can't able to understand, most probably, I, I didn't want here and read it here, I feel his unfairness on the voters and taxpayers of the Old Bridge, and also for the New Jerseians, it is so unfair, my way highway is not the right way. Look here, you see, the problem with our elections, especially in America, is only 50% of the voters go and vote. You remember, in the 2000 year Bush Junior election, it went even to the Supreme Court because regarding the Florida to decide. And even the, you see, in the Supreme Court is the highest court of justices, even the Supreme Court justices went on the Republican Party line, and then instead of electing, electing, and selecting a president at that time. See, democracy is a, what you say is corrupting the democracy by misusing bureaucratic power, Chris Christie, and putting the special election, does it make any sense after it? I really don't know. I don't know ABC of this politi, this kind of politics, Republican politics, you know, what I feel is the biggest political conspiracy, you know, what his mind thinking, I know it exactly. Because if it's a special election, it's not a November election, and people are not aware of this election, so that he, he predict, he's predicting, his advisors are telling, then a Republican senator may be elected, that's what happened. So please, voters and taxpayers of the Old Bridge, and also our New Jerseians, should go and vote on the, for the senators, and I, it should be really ashamed of it, when the election went to the, in 2000, in Supreme Court, my friends and relatives from India, what is this, why it has not decided? And so, it is so embarrassing, and our politics should be, shouldn't be on, on political line, on the Republican line, because he's a Republican governor, he's not elected by Republican voters only, all the Democrats, independents, I'm sure of that, all the votes of Tea Party, you see, this is the one which I really don't understand, Tea Party is the one, I, I don't know, first of all, then I came to know it is another form of Republican party, and extremist party. See, that is the one, the Tea Party is the one, you remember, shut down the Washington, DC, is happening. Government is of the people, for the people, by the people, and if that is shutting down the Washington, the, our government, and doing this way, it is, you are internationally, it is embarrassing. All the countries are seeing what's going on in Washington, in America, it is so embarrassing, shutting it down, and there goes on, what, if, if it is the government of the people, for the people, by the people, and how in the world
Thank you, Rod, thank you.
Shutting down means shutting down the people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Continuing with the hearing of residents, anyone else like to comment on anything that concerns the district? Going once, going twice, I'm going to close this portion of the meeting, and we're going to go to good order at this point. I think, I think we should go to order right now, because if we're here for a period of time, I want the members of the board to make their closing comments, thank you. Do I have a volunteer to start first?
I'll go, Mr. De Prima, thank you. I don't think I'm the only one that sees it, feels it, and hears it, I've spoken to other people, and according to what Mr. Sedino's letter, he read from that parent, there's something good going on in Old Bridge right now, and I am very proud to be a part of it. If people remember, I used to complain that we only heard about the bad things, it seems like every time we turn around now, that you're reading something good about us. There's a lot of excitement in the district, I think everybody, I, I don't know, it's school spirit, team spirit, just a lot of good things going on, and like I said, I, I'm really proud to be a part of it right now, I think we all have a part of it, I think everybody in the district has a part of it, and it's a good time right now.
Thank you, Mr. De Prima.
I'm going to second what Mr. De Prima said, I, I've attended several football games, and I've never seen the concession stand so packed, it just stands so packed, and what I like, Mr. Dunn, more than anything, is I noticed a lot more teachers, a lot more principals are attending the games, they seem to be more involved now, it's, the high school, I don't know, it's just like, just throwing off a magic vibe right now, I mean, I've been there for, you know, six years, and that really, I know the years passed, it was like, almost like a horror show up there, but I don't know, this last couple of years, man, that place is really, you know, it's really, the kids are excited to go into school, I mean, I used to have to force my kid to get on the bus, now he's out the door before the bus even comes. It's really, Sal, you're right, something real good is happening in Old Bridge, well, I wish this community, and I wish the, the teachers and everyone just keeps up the great work, because whatever you guys are doing, you got the kids' interest, man, and once again, thank you all so much.
Anyone else on the board? Then I guess I will.
Oh, no, I just want to say, it's always, it's a pleasure always to serve, but if you walk into any of the buildings, the buildings are alive, it's not about the concrete, it's not about the mortar, it's the students, it's the teachers, it's the power professionals, you'd look in any of our buildings, any of the elementary schools, the artwork that's hanging, the student work that is exhibited everywhere, and it, it just makes you feel good to walk through the buildings, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of the staff that makes that happen.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani, anyone else on the board?
Mr. Dunn, yeah.
Mr. Weber?
I was able to find the attachment that I had sent to Mr. Sedino and yourself, and for the, for the previous calendar, that was voted on on March 19th of 2013, and it had, of course, the October 8th and 22nd date, which we know the 22nd was a conflict. It had a November to-be-determined date indicated, looked like it was to be prior to the 19th, which would address Mr. Borceli's concern about the time in between, and it had December 3rd and 17th on there, and it's been published since March, and now we've changed December from the 3rd to the 10th. Not a matter of how it raps, the information was out there before, we made changes to that existing thing, and, and again, my bigger concern was the two-week differential.
Thank you, Mr. Weber, anyone else? I have a few items tonight that I'd like to discuss. Number one, I want to congratulate Mr. Daley for being named successor to Dr. Hoker at Madison Park, it's a wonderful facility, wonderful people, you're going to have a, a very good staff, and, and Dr. Hoker was a trailblazer, now you have to fill large shoes over there, and there's high expectations for you, Mr. Daley, and, and I'm hoping that you will be as successful as Dr. Hoker, and, and I'm pretty confident you will, and, and I just want to tell you congratulations again. Number two, the Old Bridge marching band, I believe, was first place again on, on Saturday night, Sunday morning?
Hey, the Yamaha Cup, man, Giant Stadium.
Absolutely, at, at MetLife Stadium, they excelled, like they do every year, and kudos to them, and congratulations. It, it just isn't, it's fantastic to see our sports teams and our arts programs excelling, it, it's fantastic, and, and it's, it's evidence that the, the decisions that this board made over the last three years to put a little emphasis into our sports programs, and also our arts programs have paid off, and, and our sports teams are all excelling, we're having division champions, we have contenders in the sports programs now, our arts programs are excelling, and you know what, that instills pride into That instills pride into the community. That is something that brings a community together. When you have success on the football field, or you have a success with a marching band, that brings this entire community together. And I think that's fantastic. And, and we're gonna continue that push, and I believe there's gonna be better days to come for these programs. Also, as we all know, last week, we had to put some of the buildings in lockdown for various reasons. And I know that I've gotten a few complaints concerning the amount of notifications that the Board of Education and the administration has sent out. Now, with that said, it's our responsibility to ensure we disseminate that information, we get that information out, because there is a clear and present danger. And we must give that information out to all parents and everyone who's part of the Old Bridge community. It's essential. With that said, we have a responsibility as a Board of Education, and also the township has a responsibility to protect our schools. In an event that there is a danger, whether it's inside the building or exterior of the building, we need to do our due diligence, and we need to take the chance and make sure that we secure our facilities, and we did it twice in two weeks. And quite frankly, it worked as planned. The, the, the police department notified the Board of Education. The Board of Education took the necessary steps to implement our lockdown procedures. Our resources were deployed accordingly to make sure that our buildings were secure, and we're gonna continue that. And, and I just want to assure everyone that we are on top of it, and that we do apologize for the excessive amount of notifications, but it's necessary. We may have to tweak real-time a little bit to make sure that it's not excessive, and I know the administration's looking into that. But lockdown procedures are very important. They pay dividends, and the last two events, they worked flawlessly. So I want to congratulate the administration. The principal of Shepherd School, I know she's here in the audience, I know that she was, you know, the one principal who had everything on her shoulders at that point when we had locked down that building twice. So Principal Simon, you know, did what she had to do and made sure our children were safe. So thank you, Principal Simon, and everyone who participated in that lockdown. It went very well. And number four, real quick, I just want to echo everything that was set up here tonight by Sal De Prima and Eugene Denofrio, and also Mrs. Andriani. These buildings are living. The excitement is evident, and, and it's fantastic to walk into these buildings. You know, you walk in, you could see, you could see the love, you could see the educational enrichment that's going on, and, and it's wonderful. And, and you know, I, I'm predicting right now that we're gonna have many more schools being schools of character this year, because it's incredible. It's just unbelievable. With that said, I want to thank everyone for attending this evening. We are gonna go into our workshop portion. You're more than welcome to stay and participate, but the board is going to go through an extensive draft agenda for, for our next meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Dunn, if I could just add a few points just from housekeeping. The real-time alert system is something that's new to the district. It's a cost savings to go to one service away from the honeywell, which is a duplication of services, but it's a growing process. I ask parents and members of the community to be patient with us as we're learning the intricacies of this new technology. We have made some adjustments, we have identified some concerns. So if you receive multiple announcements from various schools for the PTA closings or the PTA meetings being canceled, I do apologize for that. If you are receiving information, and you don't have any children in our schools and not sure why you're getting the information, you actually probably wouldn't be watching the show right now if you don't have children in our schools. But in case you are, and you had nothing better to do tonight than watch the show, just shoot me an email, and we'll have your name removed from the real-time system. What happens is that they are put in by parents, and the phone numbers are put in, and sometimes they transpose numbers as they're putting them in. So it's just a human error. We can look to straighten out, and hopefully some of the glitches will be straightened out. On a public service announcement, so we did not have a honeywell this evening, or a real-time alert this evening, about our parent university, which is taking place October fifteenth at Old Bridge High School. I believe that event takes place at seven?
Six thirty.
Six thirty PM on October fifteenth. We have a lot of great venues for our parents to come and learn about what's going on in our schools and beyond our schools, and how to help your child excel, both within school and as they prepare for college. So we have childcare that evening, some refreshments, a lot of community members who are bringing their own information, and some giveaways, so it's a great opportunity for you to be part of the community and learn some more. That's again, October fifteenth in the Old Bridge High School, and that is at six thirty PM. We look forward to seeing you there. Thank you, Mr. Sittadino. Moving forward into the workshop portion of our meeting. We can start. Mr. Sittadino, would there be any recognition? We have not received any recognition for that data as of now, but if more comes in, we will let you know. And I'm sure that we'll get another report from our student representative, Christopher. Superintendent's report, will there be a superintendent's report?
There'll be a superintendent's report on the state of testing and our progress towards our goals with testing.
Thank you. Moving forward, we're gonna go into athletics. Any concerns with athletics, item one?
Mr. Dunn, that should be revised. The athletics, the title should say in parentheses, "Winter and Spring." There's at least one spring position on there.
Thank you, Mr. Parton. So it would be winter slash spring. All right, moving forward to curriculum, we have items one through six.
Is number six part of what we discussed earlier today in personnel? Or is that something else? No.
That's for Scott Carpenter School.
Okay, but we didn't, we haven't heard any of that about a new class. Okay.
Establish a class, but doesn't tell us if there's any...
Mr. Tui, just read the motions.
Sure. Number six is move the board to approve the establishment of a multiple disability special class at the following school to meet the IP needs of students with disabilities, and it's M. Scott Carpenter Elementary School. That school is, that school is already, already has that class. The paperwork and the need to establish a class is necessitated by the state. So the class is already in there. There are a number of students in that class already. As part of the state regulations, that class has to be approved by the board, and that was an oversight that was not done on the August agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Tui. We have finance, items one through twelve. Mr. Mayor, number eight. Submit a three-year comprehensive maintenance plan. Was that plan developed and shared with the Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee?
It was not shared with the Buildings and Grounds Committee. It is, let me just explain what the comprehensive maintenance plan and the M. One document is. What it does is, it takes the, the actual expenditures that were dispersed for maintenance projects in year twelve, thirteen, compares the budget for thirteen, fourteen, and then on the basis of that, you use that as a guide to, in general, project the budget for fourteen, fifteen. So it's not something specific, it's just an estimated number without any specificity for the fourteen, fifteen budget.
So it's basically a guideline?
Yes.
So we can get to the new number for the next year?
That's correct. There are minimum amounts that are required to be spent on each school each year for maintenance. This document ensures that we, we abide by those regulations.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Non-certificated personnel office, any questions? Non-certificated personnel other?
Is that what we need to ask? I, we have a question.
We also have a security guard to discuss also that was moved to the workshop agenda.
Yeah, the, the non-certificated personnel other, I assume that's where it would go. We had talked about having a substitute be available as a security guard. We have a gentleman who is out on a prolonged absence, and we really need to fill that. That was not on, on the agenda. Now, in the sidebar discussion with Dr. Hoker, the fact that it's not a position, it was only a substitute, my understanding is that's why it's not on the workshop agenda. However, when we created a pool of substitutes for principals, and we have a substitute for a lot of other positions, that went through the agenda as approval. So my question to Dr. Sittadino and our legal counsel, do we need to have an approval for that?
Absolutely. If it's the substitute, anybody working and being compensated needs to be approved on an agenda.
Uh-huh.
So if that's not on here, then I apologize that it's not on here. It should be on here as a position. I know I saw the motion for it, so it, it should have been on as an agenda item. I'm not sure of when the, we have a security guard in the high school who's taking a leave, medical leave. Hopefully that we can have it voted on prior to that person taking, taking the leave. I'm not sure when the leave takes place. It's not in front of me.
Ten sixteen.
Okay, so we can, no, educating you about it now, we can then put it on the, for the sixteenth on the motion. What we have is the person at the high school, I believe it's about a two-week window that they, they plan to be out to have surgery. My concern is, as happens a lot when people from our staff go out for surgery, that it's, it goes beyond that two weeks. So if we just said, oh, you know, well, we'll try to get by for two weeks without someone, move someone around, and then we have four weeks, six weeks, two months, and then we're short staff as more activities move inside to the high school and security's at a greater need. So to address that concern, just have a, a pool or someone who fits our job description for the security guard, have them available when we have absences from, from the high school's security staff. So that was the creation of that position. Not to be confused with the next one, which I can explain if you'd like some further conversation for that. So that person, the substitute security person, would fill in during the regular security hours approximately, you know, seven AM until four PM. The second position that we've had and moved over to the, the discussion agenda, it came to my attention through Robert Erickson's office, that during sporting events, we have staff security for like volleyball and so forth that are hired to be there, and they're operating the door, like door sixteen. The door sixteen is the hot door at the high school. And for all the teams that are from lacrosse, field hockey, soccer, which are on the back or lower courts or on Geik, Geik Field, they enter through there to go into the training rooms and to the locker rooms, especially the girls' locker rooms are right there. Now, without an event going on, there's no one to man those doors. So past practice, what was happening, the door was being left open. I see that as a huge security risk for our staff, I mean, for our students and our, and our program. We can't give swipe cards to our, our staff, and we can't ask the coach to come, to leave his practice, because a young athlete has to go to the ladies' room, the men's room, or go see a trainer. So to have someone there at the, at that door to allow only students to come in would then secure our students from an intruder coming to the building, having access to the girls' locker room, which is right there, following a young lady into the, when she goes into the, use the locker room alone, and this person follow her in and then be in the locker room alone. That's my concern, that that type of thing would, would go on. Something the board's also brought to our attention, we have a lot of, you know, rec programs and so forth that are going on beyond the four, beyond the six o'clock time. So when our practices and our athletes are ending around five, five thirty, then would be the other responsibility of this person of a four to eight job swing hours, whereas they can have the rec programs or other facilities come in, oversee the building, making sure this, that whatever athletic program going on, whether it's our own basketball games or a rec program, that they're only staying in the athletic part of the building, and they're not venturing into the, the regular academic parts of the building, basically keeping the building safe and secure from outside intervention. While addressing that concern, I said, well, there's gonna be some days when there's less things going on here, and maybe there are some concerns too. I know this Board of Education at other meetings has brought up, you know, the Lombardi Field. You know, how do we have someone go over there to make sure that Lombardi Field is not being victimized by people going on there who aren't supposed to be on there, it's not being vandalized and so forth? So when this person is not, you know, from four to six, we'll be watching the athletes as they come in through door sixteen. From that six to eight period, you know, he could be securing the building or taking a time period out to go over to Lombardi Field, check it out. If a board member reports to us, or a member from the public reports to us that something going on in Lombardi Field, instead of sending just the police over there, because we're not sure who's there, is it someone with a permit? Is it someone without a permit? We can send this person over there, give that person a call. Can you check to see that the person on the field is the person that's supposed to be on the field? And again, echoing what I've heard from this board several times to protect our investment there. We've put in there up to twenty hours a week. We can see that in the wintertime, that it would be possibly less opportunities, less athletes coming in and out of the back door by sixteen, because there's no outdoor events going on. So most of the events are inside, so there's no need to watch door sixteen. So maybe less opportunities during those time. Maybe we're down to three days a week then, and then when spring kicks up again, and the spring sports go back on and track and everything else, then go back to the five days. But, you know, that schedule can be put together, not to exceed the five days and the twenty hours with Mr. Erickson and Mr. Sasso's office.
Now, you, you mentioned the township rec program. They use other buildings besides this one. So are you looking for additional personnel for Salk and Sandberg, or McDivitt, or some of the other ones where you would have rec programs which run till nine o'clock, at least, I would think, whether it's practice or the organized league?
What you do have at those schools to assist with, looking at the major event that takes place there on a daily basis, is the aftercare program. The high school does not have an aftercare program, but the special twos are assigned to oversee the buildings for the aftercare program. So there is some level of protection in those buildings. There is not a level of protection at the high school.
Okay, and again, what about the rec programs that run from six to nine o'clock at the other buildings?
At this time, we're not receiving a complaint about those programs, and people running, you know, usually there's only one group in there. Usually they're in the gym or so, so forth. At the high school, there's multiple gyms, multiple events going on, and, you know, last year we had an alarm pulled, and it was difficult to identify which group they came from, because we had multiple groups inside there. We had to go through the camera, and then we were able to do it. But again, our security at the high school is Walter, the custodian, for those events. So this way, it would assist, and Walter can do what he's supposed to be doing, and on paper, it give us some level of some liability protection as well, that we just turned our back and didn't do nothing. At least we put someone there to ensure that we're protecting our, our staff, our students, and our investment.
But I don't, I don't think, I don't know if the board members understand that we're looking for, one was a substitute, which is not an additional position, but is looking for an additional part-time position. So this would be a newly established position at a part-time rate. So I just wanted to make sure that you understand that that would be what was going on the agenda.
I, I, I think that basically we have two alternatives here, is to possibly hire a, a part-timer, or go to the township and ask them for one of the special ones. So there, there are two avenues here for us. Obviously, you know, we have the high school, which has a lot of sports teams, there's a lot of activity in and out of those doors, so it would be a prudent expenditure to have someone there. Now, again, do we want to have our own staff member or outsource it to the municipality? And that's an argument that we need to have here on the board.
Well, as we begin to look at whether it's security, whether it's security for the child, for the child, for the athlete, or if it's security for the building, as things develop, then we need to do what we need to do. I'm not adverse to that. I'm just, is one enough? And is the board okay with adding another position? We had said we would not do that, with the exception of the special needs. So this is not a replacement, this is an additional.
I don't think you could put a price on security. I mean, we, we...
I mean, we, we passed a huge vote a couple of months back with, in fact, we had to raise taxes, I believe, for cost of security issues. So, I mean, when it comes to the security children, Don, I don't think anyone besides, I can't speak for you, but I don't have a problem with it. But I do have a problem with Mrs. Setadino, there's this quick question for you on this matter. I was off of work last week and I happened to go down, I'm sorry. I was off of work last week and I had gone down to the, the track. I noticed the kids from Sandberg, you had gym class and I guess it was a pretty nice day out, so they, they had them outside on the track. But I noticed that the public was able to access the track while the students were around. Now, there were teachers there, don't get me wrong, the kids were not by themselves. But I've just, me being a parent, I'd like to take, and being from the city of New York, I just like to take things to the next level. You know, we talk about, you know, pedophiles and you talk about people who scope out little children. My concern is if anyone from the public, from any town, can walk onto our track while our children are there, I have a, I have an issue with that. Is there any way when our children from Sandberg are out on the fields, I think the track could be closed to the public for that 45-minute gym period, that 25-minute gym period, just for safety reasons? Like, when the football field's out there, the football team's out there, ain't nobody going to mess around with a 240-pound linebacker or the marching band when there's 80 kids. But, you know, but the way the bleachers are set up where somebody can hide behind a bleach, grab a little kid or, you know, just possible, these kids are targets and unfortunately, it's the sick world we live in. I don't like the fact that the track is open. I do not want to keep our kids inside these buildings on beautiful days. They should walk the facility, they should be able to go out and school Browns. But is it necessary that, that while the gym period is there, that the public is allowed to use the track or use the facility?
There are two ways to look at that from, you know, my standpoint is, you know, one, I would never want us to make that decision in isolation without talking to people from the community, the mayor's office and so forth about, something has drastic changed because Lombardi Field obviously is, is something that is a, a center point and used by many members of the public. The other way to look at it too is, you know, no other, no other schools have a track. So, they're operating their phys ed classes without using a track. The high school doesn't have a track. The students aren't walking around the high school for, around the track for their high, for their phys ed programs. So, it's something we look at, well, to keep our children safer and closer to the school, they don't use the track and they use the facilities there. No.
I don't want to be, I don't want to be the guy who's locking those kids in that building on a beautiful day. It's bad enough, you know, like Mr. Bosil, you brought up a few minutes ago, we have no air conditioning in these buildings, as is. I don't want to be the guy who says, oh, sure, Gino locked us in these buildings now, we can't go out and play. I don't want that. I just really, if we could, if you, if you're talking maybe specials, if we have one in the building, whatever, they can walk with those kids out there. They can keep an extra eye, a professional eye instead of us. It's bad enough these teachers have their hands full with, you know, teaching and watching the children. I really don't want to have a teacher act, act like a SWAT team member, you know? It's not their job, unfortunately. Fortunately for them, I mean, they're educators and that's what they should be. I don't want to take anything away from them, you know?
What I would recommend that I do then before the next meeting is set up a meeting, Mr. Erickson, Mr. Mara, someone from my office and someone from Recreation, Township and so forth, and see what we could do to better secure the site and allow access for everyone who needs to use it.
Getting back to the, the request for a part-time security guard, it's, it's obvious there is, there's, there is a need for it based upon the delineation of information that was shared with us. But we need to make a decision on, on which route. We're looking at 15, less than $15,000 a year for a part-timer who is going to be, I believe, flex hours. They can be given, you know, a, a, a morning shift if necessary, if there's some, some sort of event. They can also go to Lombardi Field. So, this person that you are advocating, they're going to be a flex position? That 20 hours could be utilized basically anytime?
From, from my understanding and absence of any, any language for it, you know, maybe the, all the hours aren't Monday through Friday, maybe there's an hour, a few hours on Saturday, maybe there's a track meet going on or something like that, we could use them as well. As long as they don't exceed the, the 20 hours a week and $15,000 a year.
Mr. Mara, do we have any monies in the security portion of our budget that's not earmarked or allocated at this point where we could possibly fund this part-time person to secure some of our sporting events and facilities?
In terms of security and maintenance issues, we, we always have the ability to withdraw money from maintenance reserve to cover these things, at these types of situations that are unforeseen. This was not a budgeted amount, so if the need arises by the end of the year that I do need to pull money out of maintenance reserve to cover this, I would do that. That is the one benefit of having funds in maintenance reserve.
Mr. Setadino, based upon your recommendation, I know that you have asked for this. I believe that in your eyes, it's necessary, correct?
Again, I do believe that if we take the stance that we do nothing and hope for the best, then it's never a good plan. I know it is $15,000 and $15,000 is money. But I, after being in the assistant superintendent position, in this position, I've heard for, you know, about a year and a half now about the board's interest in protecting our investment, protecting our students, and I think this puts us on a plan towards that. So, that's why I bring it to you, but it's at the board's discretion to, to approve it or come up with a suggestion at this time of another way to go to that, down that route.
Do I have any more comments from my fellow board members on this matter? If we leave it for the next action agenda, would there be any objections? Okay, very well. Moving forward, certificate personnel.
There's just one correction. Under number 13D, the school should be Cheesequake, not Voorhees, and it's grade three.
Number 18, ABA stipends. Could someone give me what ABA stands for?
It's Applied Behavior Analysis. It's for stipend that was negotiated last year for all of our ABA teachers.
And that's behaviorist? ABA? Okay.
This is an additional stipend? Is there, is there already a stipend for a certificated special needs teacher? Just this designation?
Non-certificated Personnel Transportation. Supplies, Equipment and Services. I see point one. I believe Fieldhouse Access Control System, that was based upon the committee meeting where it was brought to our attention that there was a key issue. That's what facilitated this issue?
Yes, and now the, since the, that Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, the fiber connection has been completed in the Fieldhouse, so we're now able to do this effectively. In addition, we will be able to provide additional phone services down there at, at no additional cost to the district.
Now, the Fieldhouse Access Control System is going to be connected to the district system and whomever has access, whether a coach or an assistant coach, they will have key cards that will be turned on and off just at their times of, of use of the facility?
That's correct.
Thank you. Transportation. Warrant miscellaneous, any concerns or questions?
I don't have a, a question or concern on what's listed on miscellaneous, but I can't think of any other place where I could bring this up and since it's a workshop session. Possibly it could have been brought up under Finance. We received in the last day or two, an update on enrollment for September, the end of September for 2013, which is sent to us by Central Administration. And just a couple of noteworthy things, I went back and looked at. I probably have every enrollment record going back to 1985 or so. But I went back to 1999, which is the largest enrollment that we had up to that point before the referendum was completed. And the district had, not counting the Adal Thai School, who were excluded from this total, 10,029 students. As of September of 2013, we're at 8903. That's a, a reduction of 1,126 students over that period of time. The largest loss has taken place at the elementary schools where it's 937 mainstream students. Now, some of that has been offset by picking up approximately 60 additional self-contained special ed students, which is, is more of a space issue and of course, a staffing issue. But the tough part of it is that we've lost 346 elementary students just since 2010. And I had done the demographics for the Long Range Planning Committee for probably 15 years prior to the referendum. I also looked at the housing construction in Old Ridge that took place. And for the period from 2003 just to 2007, 1,249 housing permits were issued. When the bottom fell out of the real estate market in 2007, there haven't been 200 issued since then in that six-year period. It's been my experience that children generally come from new housing. They don't come from existing developments. I live in Central Park, the numbers remain steady. Seniors such as myself will move out, they're replaced by a younger family. Their kids course through the school system, more often than not, a lot of them stay. And those numbers remain pretty much very, very steady and more systematic of the growth rate in the country, you know? So, that's not much of a change. The push always comes from new developments and they have a life cycle where early on, they come in with small families, one child, no children, and then they populate the, the house and the children percolate up through the elementary school system. So, as far as I'm concerned, the engine that drives the enrollment increase in Old Ridge is new housing. It is not anything else. And without any foreseeable change in the future, in the next three to five years, and even if you were to start tomorrow and building at that rate of 312 houses a year, you wouldn't see any real impact on the elementary schools, probably for five to seven years down the road. What I would anticipate is that over the next three or four years, you're going to lose at least another 100 students at the elementary schools. Reason I bring this up is we, in 1999, we had 4,488 elementary school students with about 30 less classrooms that were added by the referendum. We had brought back Miller School in 1997 and put that back online. We're going to come to a point where we're going to have a, a real demand on where our resources in this district are going to go. It's, I think it's shortsighted to believe that our state funding at some point is not going to be revisited based on the serious drops we have in enrollment. I hope I'm wrong, but I don't expect that I will be. And what I'm cautioning this board is, given a lot of expenses we've taken on in, in the last few years to expand the kind of things we do, we're going to come to a tipping point where we have to provide essential services and, and we're going to have to really figure out a way how to do this. The other problem is we've driven most of our elementary schools, the majority of them are now two sections on a grade level, which is not the best educational model. We have two schools currently, which I will not name, but the, the board members will have a copy of that report, that currently each have a morning and an AM kindergarten class that each only have 11 students in. That's two schools. Now, by our model for kindergarten, that should be one class of 22. We didn't do that, so we're paying, we're paying for an extra teacher. The other, the other thing is, is that we are seeing reflective of the economy, there's, there's three points where you see a transition in what happens to schools when you move from fifth grade to sixth grade, when you move from eighth grade to ninth grade. And in most years, we used to pick up 4% or 5% enrollments because people who had children in parochial school in the fifth grade would opt to go to the middle schools for the superior services they thought, they believed they would get. At high school, conversely, you would lose 8% to 10% of the class who would go to parochial schools, private schools. This year, that was only 2%, which I think is reflective of the economy and parents' inability to pay for private school. In spite of that, we're down again, 937 at the elementary since 99, 286 at the middle school, and we're actually plus 17 at the high school. But that's more, more a product of this older construction, kids coursing through the systems. At some point, we're potentially going to lose over the next five or six years, another 700 or 800 kids in this district, which will take us down almost 2,000 students from 1999. I can't see the state leaving your funding alone. So, I just, I put this out there as a caveat that every time you think about adding a new service and realizing that at some point in time, unless you know what, what is going to happen, you've got to be very careful about what you spend because all indications are that we're not going to see any big monster building boom and you won't see any, any change. And by the way, the, the outgoing kindergarten class of 420 ballooned up to 578 students in first grade, which is an increase of almost 38%. We've been running 30% over the last five years or higher. And rather than the 508 projected kindergarten students that would project out to 549 next year. So, already, there are going to be some impacts, anticipated impacts on the, on the kindergarten, full-day kindergarten program. And I just put it out there for when you get to the finance part of doing the budget, that you just keep it in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Anyone else?
Mr. Dunn, is this, I don't know if this is in a, an opportune time or not, but we just came from another meeting where a request was made for special needs staffing. So, we need to discuss that with the board members.
Yes, I think.
We are going to have an executive session, but if you're talking about staffing needs, that is not a matter of personnel. So, go ahead, Mrs. Andriani. I should say it's not a confidential matter of personnel.
Earlier, the last night, our meeting was canceled due to the inclement weather. But we just had a meeting with Dr. Hoker and Mr. Tuwi in terms of SOC. SOC is one of our focus schools. SOC is a concern. We have RAC representatives that come every week. We're we are busting at the seams in that area. Where Mr. Weber was just talking about a drop in enrollment and in elementary enrollment, our special needs enrollment has increased significantly, especially in the SOC area. According to our administrative team, if any other students arrive at SOC with a particular IEP and classification, that they would not be able to accommodate them. So, a request has been made for an additional special needs teacher. And for some particulars, maybe we'd be better off having Mr. Tuwi explain why the request is made, either that or Dr. Hoker. So, if you, if one of you would mind discussing this with the board.
Well, this is why I asked Mr. Tuwi to come in and explain it to you, but I think he can do the best job on this one.
Okay.
Good evening. Over the course, and again, as Mr. Weber stated earlier, we have had a decline in enrollment. enrollment, but our special needs population has grown. As of last year, on October 15th, we had 9,103 total students in district, and 13.31% of that population was special needs for approximately 1,212 students. Salk School, after the redistricting in 2009, 2010, added 50 additional special needs students and no teachers. That number has grown another 20. Right now, they have 155 special needs students, and they're at the same exact staffing number that they had when they had 85. Part of the concern with that is that our classes are full. The, if you are a seventh grade resource pullout student at Salk, there is no room in the end, for lack of a better term. Either option A would be they would have to be transported to Sandberg, which is a doable option, but as of October 8th, which is today, that's not the ideal because anyone who would have to be placed in a resource pullout English class in seventh grade would have to be transported across town to Sandberg. Sixth grade, there are two spots remaining, first come, first served. So as of right now, our major dilemma is that we have the need for a English teacher, resource placement English teacher at Salk. Salk's schedule is a double period, English period, so it's two 40-minute blocks. So the teacher would end up having a two 80-minute blocks of ELA, ELA grade six, ELA grade seven, and then because of the RAC suggestions, because Salk is a focus school, the teacher would also receive an in-class resource mathematics class for our sixth grade where our test scores are in need of improvement. So that's what the schedule would be, and that's why the request was made. We do not take, I know especially at this point in time in October, these requests lightly. I can show you any data that you do need to see in terms of breaking down the numbers and the request. Some request or data was already asked for in terms of fifth grade numbers moving up, but that does not solve our issue for this, this current school year. It is a, is a dilemma. I'm glad I was able to bring it to the personnel committee, and I thank Dr. Hoker for that opportunity, and I would ask for the board's consideration in this, in this request.
Mr. Tuwi, can I just ask another question that's not related to the actual Salk concern, but something that doesn't reflect in the enrollment numbers? How many pre-K students do we have in our elementary schools? Do you know, roundabout ballpark?
The total number of pre-K, which again would be one of those jumps, pre-K to kindergarten, that Mr. Weber had discussed about. We have right now four full-day preschool programs in district. Those classes average approximately six. Those students will all go to a classroom that is going to be a kindergarten, most likely full-day classroom in the district. That is another staffing concern because as we move forward and those preschool students do become kindergarten, they're first grade students, while we do end up having a lower amount of enrollment in terms of total numbers, the classrooms are full. And those classrooms are full because we have specialized programs for students who normally we would end up placing out of district, but we're able because of the resources provided by the board to, to serve those students in district, which is obviously the best possible situation for those kids.
And that's not inclusive about the 125 that are at the Glenn School and part of that, that program? This is totally separate?
No, those are all tuition students and they bring in income to the district.
Now, just, Mr. Tuwi, the request was made for permanent spot. In our discussion, we had asked, and maybe we need to have Mr. Parton give us clarification on this, if we were to discuss a long-term substitute, an LTS position, where we're not committed, thereby waiting for rising sixth grade from fifth grade numbers, how do we proceed to ask for a substitute for a position that we don't have in the first place? So is that, in legalese, is that possible?
Yeah, a long-term substitute can be used to fill an unbudgeted position pending the review and development of the 1415 budget, which is coming right up.
Mm-hmm.
It is not necessarily the ideal way to go. It's a question for the administration. I would defer to them and so would the board on whether that shallows your applicant pool to a level that is to a detriment to the students. But because this is not a budgeted position, because it is not an existing position, you could go with a long-term sub at this point.
Okay. The other, the other part that the board should understand as well is that, again, let me just reiterate that special needs population, depending upon the classification of the IEP, it's not as if, well, we can just put another chair in the room, so we have 29 seats, we can go over the amount and put 30 in there. We certainly cannot do that. So if the, if the classroom can only hold 12 mandated by law, whether it's 12, whether it's 16, whether it's a single teacher, a teacher with a para, we have to go along with those mandates. On top of that, we're talking about Salk School, which is a focus school. So we do have the binoculars on us and we're under the microscope in that particular facility. In the personnel meeting, we did discuss Dr. Hoker's working on personnel and perhaps a redistribution of some of our support staff. So I don't know how much that would help us financially, but at least we would be looking at whether or not we can rearrange where some of the staffing would go. Not we, the administration.
Well, and I just want to clarify that we are at the max number with a para in those, in the classroom that Mr. Tuwi is talking about right now. So there is no approval to go to another student. There's no room left.
Based upon the information and our conversations in the personnel meeting, it's needed. The position is needed because of the issues that you have with numbers at Salk School. Obviously, we can't turn a blind eye, but we do have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that we can afford it going forward. And as Donna had mentioned, we have made a concerted effort to say, hey, we're drawing a line on hiring, and we need to find alternate ways of finding money to place a new hire, whatever it's to, you know, consolidate another class and transfer people. But in this particular situation, there is a dire need. And, and you know, our, our special needs children need the support, they need the resources, and at this point, you have no other avenue to turn to. That's why we had mentioned an LTS position, so that it's there, we have someone there, and then when the budget time comes where we're constructing a budget February, March, and we understand what monies we're getting from the state, then we can determine the long-term position needs for, for your department. So I'm in all favor of giving you that LTS position, and then we can determine come February, March, as we're constructing the budget, to make it a permanent position because obviously there is a dire need for that professional. I know that we are operating with less paras, I believe, at this point. Mr. Tuwi, is that correct?
Our paras are all maxed out right now, so I, anything new or suggested moving forward would be because a student moved into district and/or is enrolling in district and would need a para. So those are the only situations where I can envision moving paras at this time. Our paras are, are working to the, to the max. They're wonderful people, all 168 of them, and...
No, I, I understand they are wonderful people, they're hardworking, they're very valuable to what we do, but I think we budgeted X amount for, for last year's budget, and I'm asking if we're at that number. I think it was 172, 176, because there may be some monies on that line item that where we could take and utilize for this professional for special needs.
I think last year, we ended the year at 176, and right now, we're at 168.
So my question to Mr. Mara would be, what would we budget for, and is there monies that we have on that specific line item that we can transfer over to utilize for the need for a special needs teacher for this scenario?
Mr. Tuwi just brought this issue to my attention yesterday, and we only had very, very preliminary discussions about it, but my recollection was that we had budgeted for 170 paras. Is that your recollection? Not the number that was...
I don't know the exact number, I'm sorry.
So I, I don't have an answer for you, but I will get an answer for you.
Yeah, I think it will be very important for you to give us that information so we can determine how we're going to fund this. I think it's a necessary expense because of the situation we're currently in with numbers. But I don't want to call it a permanent position. I know that permanent employees can be rift after, before they get tenure, but you know, that's, you know, semantics and words which the administration can work on. But we want to, or at least I as president wants to give, wants to give you that resource because it's critical. But we just need to make sure that it works and that we can fund it long-term.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tuwi. All right, so any other questions on miscellaneous? Board secretary and board business. I think maybe Joe Mara should explain this a little bit. Okay, received, thank you. We're going to discuss this matter a little bit more in detail in the executive session. That will conclude the workshop portion of our meeting.
Need a motion to go into closing session, I'll make that motion.
Does any of the board members want to say any closing words? If not, I'm going to need a motion to...
I'll make that motion, Mr. Don, to go into executive close sessions.
For purposes of clarification, the motion for executive session will be matters of contract and attorney-client privilege for discussion of the board vacancy and of professional services. You have a motion for Mr. D'Onofrio.
Can I have a second, please, for executive session?
Adriani.
Thank you, Mrs. Adriani. Roll call, Mr. Mara.
Adriani.
Yes.
Borcelli.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
D'Onofrio.
Solakowski.
Weber.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Motion's passed.